Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to welcome you to tonight's meeting. We are having it tonight as opposed to next weekend in honor of the Memorial Day observance. I'm not going to call it a holiday because it's actually the day that our nation's in mourning for those who gave their lives so we could be sitting here today. So if you'll please stand, I'm going to call this meeting to order. And we will do our opening exercises. And before I start with our prayer, Heavenly Father, we're going to ask for a moment of silence for Ms. Walker, a James Island Elementary School teacher who has been called home to the Lord in her prime, if you ask me, but she'll never be able to be replaced or the impression she left upon our young children. So please, just give a moment of silence. Heavenly Father, may we stand together today as believers and pray for God to heal our land and strengthen His people. May we pray for all those in authority. May we pray for God's miraculous intervening, for blind eyes to be opened, and for many to see the power of our Lord as never before. John 15:13 says, "There is no greater love hath no man but this, to lay down his life for his friends." As we go forth into the Memorial Day weekend and Day of Observance, lest we forget the sacrifices, the ultimate sacrifice paid by many, that we today may live in a free country, although we know freedom is not free. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. [singing] Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars drew the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? Hadn't the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Please be seated.
All right. Give her a hand for that.
Thank you. Freedom of Information Act, please.
Signs with the Freedom of Information Act. Notice of this meeting and its agenda were provided to all news media persons requesting information.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Here.
Commissioner Grant. Commissioner Latson.
Present.
Commissioner Milliken.
Here.
Commissioner Woolsey.
Here.
Thank you. I'm now going to call the oral and written petitions. If there are any signed in, you have three minutes per speaker. Okay. All right, going on to item number four, consent agenda for A, Ways and Means from March 11th of this year; B, public hearing of April 22nd; C, regular meeting of April 22nd; and D, the wastewater committee meeting on May 6th. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And are there any adjusting, modifications, or corrections? None so stated, I call a roll call vote, please, for approval.
Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant. Commissioner Latson.
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken.
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey.
Yes.
Okay, going on to item number five, Fire Station.
Excuse me, before we go on the floor, we have some new staff. I'd like an introduction because I don't know who they are. Can we do that?
Yeah, can we do it after we get through a little bit of this? After the DM update in between eight and nine?
Well, whenever, just do it, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
New staff recognition. Number five, Fire Station Two status update. Tom Glick, Fire Chief.
So I just wanted to give you all a brief update on what's been happening with Fire Station Two since it's been some time that we've given an update. On May 2nd, we held a meeting with the senior staff of the Fire Department with Steve Coe of Coe Architects and Jay Davis, the construction firm that we hired. They came in with some pricing on a fire station. There was some numbers that we needed to work on to get this within budget, so they went back and are working on some new numbers. The next time that there'll be a pricing update will be the next meeting, and that will be in the end of July, and we should have a more accurate update on what the pricing of Fire Station Two will be. We made some minor changes to the plans. Those are being worked into the design phase of the fire station, and we have a meeting set up again for July. We may have one in June with some prepricing, and it looks like, from waiting on permitting, which can take up to 20 weeks, we may get to November for construction of Fire Station Two. That's pretty much the update of what's happening right now. Any questions? Thank you.
Proposed updates for the fiscal year '25 draft budget and fiscal year '25 budget resolution. Ed Kilcullen, Director of Finance.
Good evening. I think every time we bring the budget to you, there's going to be new numbers, no matter how many times we bring it. Well, that's because new information becomes available. So the last time I was up here, we had a budget that included raises for the employees that was in excess of the increase in tax revenue for the general fund, so that's not really sustainable. So we made adjustments so that every employee can be eligible for a 3.2 average merit increase and a 3% COLA, which is greater than the COLA we received this year.
And COLA stands for?
Cost of Living Adjustment.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. For the sake of transparency, I want to go over some one-time transactions that we're incurring in both the operating funds, the general fund and the wastewater fund. Right now, in the general fund, we project to fund one-time purchases through the fund balance. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that. Prudent use of fund balance can be advantageous for emergencies and one-time purchases if they're desperately needed or they achieve savings. So for instance, in the general fund, we have the fire truck savings plan of $212,000. We have the marketing to meet your strategic plan. We have specific fire truck repairs. We have remodeling of bathroom in Fire Station Number Four. We have the purchase of an inflatable education house. We have the purchase of the fuel tank that will serve the entire district's fleet. We have purchase of radios. We have repair of roof leaks in Solid Waste Building, and we have the automatic side loader. These all come total to $896,000 that we fund through fund balance. I'm not saying we shouldn't spend this money. It's just kind of buried in the budget presentation so you have more clarity on this use of fund balance. If we were to use it for raises, I would say you don't want to do that because eventually you would erode your fund balance down to zero and have no emergency reserves. Looking on to wastewater, we have a similar situation where we're using fund balance. We have the local match for the ARPA project. That would be the sewer expansion project in Clark's Point. Sixteen, excuse me, $18,000 compared to the 10,000, or excuse me, 10 million we're spending on the whole project. So it's not much, but the grant wouldn't supply 100% of the funds, so we came up with that difference. We have marketing materials, again, addressing your concern for identity and communication. We have the county relocation projects. They were mandating that we move lines, and if we didn't sign their agreement soon, they weren't going to chip in for it. So you, as an elected body, agreed to it, and the county is going to kick in $103,000 of that cost. Our share would be 229,000. There's also the purchase of the vacuum truck. Ours is in pretty disrepair and outdated. The radios that maintain communications with our field employees and the management team. The share of the fuel tank, replace of a generator, a pull behind generator, generators that are used when electric goes down typically during a storm. We have pump replacements. We've established a system where we're going to systematically replace pumps before they get too old and actually break down. Then we also have the Pump Station 23 renovation, which is a high priority project, and it has unusually high flow compared to other pump stations. That total of those expenditures is $1,273,000. As you, our total fund balance spend in wastewater is 8.1 million. Again, these are one-time purchases in the sense that we're not buying these items every year. So I just wanted you to have full understanding of why we're using fund balance in those two funds. I'll take any questions?
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes, ma'am. Do you recall what our COLA raises were in '21, '22, '23, '24?
It's been 2% each of at least the past two years.
Okay, so 2% lasts two years?
Mm-hmm.
And before that?
I'm sorry?
And before that?
Hmm.
You don't remember?
No.
Okay. So we're going from 2% COLA raises to 3%.
Right.
Do you remember what average merit raises have been, just generally?
I know last year was 3.2%.
Okay, the same.
And I would guess it was probably the same the year prior.
Ed, is there any reason why we can't separate out in the budget the new Fire Station Number Two project as a separate sheet and separate out the sewer expansion as separate? Because we're getting bonds money, bond money, for Fire Station Number Two, and the way we look at it, it's all mixed in, in general fund, fire, and same with the grant money for sewer expansion and the earmark funds. It just seems like it would make more sense to keep those major projects separate.
So we do account for them separately. They're in their own project funds, but the budget is exactly what your loan proceeds are. You can only spend what you get the loan proceeds for. So the Fire Station Two, I think you approved 4.5 million in bond proceeds.
But I think we're going to approve more. I mean, I don't think we've approved all of the package yet.
Right, we've been doing it. You've been approving it incrementally.
Okay.
Mr. Kilcullen, when you said the average 3.2 merit, and that can go up to four, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
That's all I've got. Thanks.
Commissioners, anyone else? Thank you.
Uh-huh. Do you want to talk about the wastewater?
Yep. The next item is proposed updates for Resolution Number 23-05 wastewater collection system use and rate. Ed Kilcullen, Director of Finance.
So this hasn't really had any changes since last time we were up here. It does have the results of the rate study where we increased the fee to, by seven and a half percent. We've, I'm thankful that you're considering removal of the drop box outside our office as that is a safety hazard. We've had employee, we had one employee in particular twist their ankle when they were out there. It's very gravelly. We have a lot of heavy equipment running up and down those roads, driven by fallible humans. Tractor trailers for the industrial park and our own people are all running up and down that road. People should come inside in the confines of our fenced-in property and the heating and air conditioning we provide in the lobby, and of course, they can always go on auto-pay, auto-draft, or mail their checks into our drop box, lockbox, excuse me. And I'll take any questions on that now.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Good evening. I had two questions on page 21. Did you all catch the typo on fiscal year '27 transportation impact fee? $15 seems a little low.
[laughing] Noted.
And then my main question was, under wastewater charges, unauthorized or tampering? Do we feel like that's enough? Like, if someone's tampering with our lines, it seems like a really small number. I mean, I don't know how often it happens. It may never happen, but is that really enough to cover?
I, well, I've never seen it myself. Joanne, do you know any history?
Yes.
This year?
Not this year, but once a year, but it does happen.
So maybe once a year. It's just a number we've had on the books for a while.
Sorry, ask that question. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Any other commissioners with any questions?
I've just, did we decide what that credit card charge fee was going to be? Because it, you know, it bothers me for it to not be in the resolution.
So that is, if you will turn, so that is in the wastewater resolution itself in the listing of fees. It's $1.50 per transaction, and it's in the budget.
Thank you.
So we probably won't have that live until January 1st.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. And next will be the District Manager's Report. Tamara Robinson, Acting District Manager.
So we can start off by introducing our new employees. First, we have our new executive assistant here, Ms. Brown Crouch, in the admin department, Inanna White. She's been with us now for two weeks. And we have Kendra Smith, the new director of wastewater.
Can they come up? Because I can't see over that thing.
Ms. Brown Crouch, can you please stand up?
Let me see you down.
They were introduced at the last meeting. Sorry.
All right, I wasn't here.
Kendra Smith, the new director of wastewater services.
Okay, I wasn't here.
Yes.
Good new fireman.
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone that came out to support the Adopt a Highway Pickup on Saturday, May 18th. As a reminder, our offices will be closed next Monday, May 27th, in honor of Memorial Day, and Wednesday, June 19th, in honor of Juneteenth, National Independence Day. After the memorial holiday next week, the wastewater department will return to the operating hours of Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This change will better support the department's operational needs and the organization's structure. The DM search team met last Wednesday, and we reviewed applications and discussed the next steps for onboarding the new district manager, which will be further discussed in executive session. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions in regards to the district manager's report?
Kathy, hello.
Hey, Kathy, what you got?
So, we're not going to have our wastewater team working any weekends?
Yes, on call. We still have that.
Well, I, I'm against this, 100%. We are public utility. No public utility has workers not working a weekend.
That's not true.
Well, they can be one.
There's another, I think it's Berkeley.
Berkeley County.
Berkeley County.
We were spending a lot of time in overtime. Wastewater emergencies, you know, can happen anytime, day or night, and we should have a team on the island ready to handle it. You've got three days with people being called in to work, and I really think I'm very much opposed to this. And we need the people there.
And we have them there.
We're going to be paying overtime for people coming in all the weekend.
We manage overtime like we've done in the years past. We just recently switched to that when Joe and David were here, and it has not proved to be beneficial.
Well, that's on stand.
Thank you for your comment.
Number nine, Committee in James Island Public Service District Representative Reports, Wastewater Committee Update and Recommendation.
That's you, Ms. Woolsey?
Oh, yes. Um, I'm sorry, what, you wanted me to make the motion or the?
Well, it's the wastewater committee update from when y'all had the committee meet the other day, when we were presented with the materials regarding Up on the Hill Road and Clark's Point, and I always forget the third one.
Paul is on that committee as well.
The wastewater committee made a motion to drop up the hill road, and we'd like to bring that forward to the committee, and because it wasn't cost effective to supply one vacant lot. And so the motion we came up with was to drop up the hill road from the sewer expansion project, which we'll have to notify people in Columbia about that. So we need a second on that. No, we don't, because it's from the wastewater committee, right?
Yep, you're just giving the report at this point. There's been no motions made yet.
Excuse me, this district manager, if we could clarify that motion to also read that no one on Up on the Hill Road signed off to receive a grinder pump. So it wasn't cost effective because no one, they've had several months to sign up, and they don't wish to participate.
What about Oak Point?
That doesn't need to be in a motion.
Well, you said it wasn't cost effective, and if this is going to be in our minutes, if this is going.
We've made a proposal to drop up the hill road.
I don't think that was the motion coming out of wastewater. Your motion that you're reading tonight wasn't the motion that came out of wastewater. Does anybody have that?
I've got it right here. It says Commissioner Woolsey made a motion to drop up on the hill road, have the grant amended, and move to the full commission, seconded by Commissioner Cantrell. Discussion followed.
Excellent. That doesn't say anything about cost effectiveness.
We need to leave that out. That's not part of a motion.
Yes, that would be too long.
So what is the, what, restate your motion, please, in brevity?
Whatever's in the minutes should be the motion.
The motion was to drop uphill, up the hill road. What we passed was to drop up the hill road from the sewer expansion project.
Correct.
I second.
And Madam Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I would also like to add Oak Point to that. So we need to buckle on that and discuss that.
I think they should be completely separate motions.
Yeah, that's not the recommendation from wastewater.
All right, then let's go forward with your first motion. I will still stay in second, and then we will take Oak Point separately, and I will second for discussion. So that being the case, on her first motion, is there any discussion on eliminating Up on the Hill Road as none of the residents wanted to tie in and they want to maintain their own sewers and, or, yeah, they just want to maintain their own old, what do you call it?
Septic tanks.
Septic tanks. So that's a second. So may I have roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant? Commissioner Latson?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
You have another motion, Commissioner Woolsey?
So you, all want to be separate. I also make a motion to drop Oak Point from the expansion project.
Second for discussion. Any commissioners have a question? Please raise your hand so you can be recognized. Commissioner Cantrell.
I feel like we discussed this pretty well in the wastewater committee. It is my opinion that eliminating Oak Point at this time is admitting failure there, and I think it's too early to admit failure there. Bob George is still working on this, as well as the town has sent their septic tank letters to everyone on Oak Point to get them a free pump and check. So I think it's too early to take them out of the project.
Commissioner Inez Brown Crouch?
Well, I think that with all the people who don't have sewer, I don't see that we should be forcing sewer on people who do not want it. We can take the money and give it to the people who need it. I don't believe in forcing anyone to do anything that they do not want to do.
Commissioner Latson?
Yes, I feel the same like Inez. They had adequate time to respond, so we don't need to continue to go on with the same project.
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes, ma'am. Oak Point is very different from Up on the Hill Road because it involves several town residents. The town residents are in a different situation because the town received earmark funds from the state, from Representative Wetmore to pay the cost for the grinder pump. So part of the difference with Up on the Hill Road is that they're unincorporated Charleston County residents who do not receive the earmark funds to help them pay for the grinder pump and pay for abandoning their septic tank. So we're still working with town of James Island residents on Oak Point Road. Additionally, at the location of Ellis Creek, there behind the speedy, is the worst pollution for the last 10 years in Charleston County. It is that location that began this whole process, began the study, began the EPA warning that we had to clean the creek, and for us to abandon the very worst polluted area on this island now is premature. So I would urge all commissioners to please, at this point, keep the Oak Point project in the grant.
So this is also, if I recall from the wastewater committee meeting, that these are the residents that have been very vocal about not wanting to have it, to the point of, you know, that's, that's just what I, that's what I recall. Any other further discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel like one place that I really wanted to see the sewer expansion was Oak Point. That to me would cure a lot of ills, but you've got people who are going to fight this tooth and nail. We have had everybody in the world knocking on those people's doors, trying to convince them this is the thing to do, and they're adamant it's not their septic tanks that are doing the damage, but who else could it be? And disappointed we have to drop this, but we need to allocate money elsewhere and to have our engineers tied up on a project that's not going to go through. And they will fight this. They'll, lot of warriors, and they'll fight this. And I say, you know what? You know, if you want to swim in that creek, you go right ahead.
Commissioner?
But I'm disappointed that we have to drop it, but I feel we're beating a dead horse. Now, if Susan and Paul want to go over there and knock on doors, I am. Now, if Susan and Paul want to go over there and knock on doors, I am all in favor of them doing that.
Thank you.
And if they think they can convince these people, let them go do it. If they come back with signed forms, and they'll go in.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ladsen? Commissioner Ladsen?
Yes, I'll make it brief. Like Kathy was saying, we've had, we put a lot of money, even paying and having conferences and explaining to these people, and they still don't want to receive it. So we don't need to continue.
And this is going to be the last round. Commissioner Cantrell?
I just, I think it's, I still think it's premature to make this a decision. I think we give them a month and let them respond to the town, let them respond to us, and see if anything's possible. I just, I hate to give up on it so easily.
Something else that's really-
Excuse me. Commissioner Milliken?
Okay. Something else that's really important about this is we have the new townhomes going in literally across the street on Gravity Sewer. So we have new units going in on Gravity Sewer right there that, and the district upgraded the pump station there on Central Park Road. You know, I just think we could look at this again next month and see what we can do in the next month.
And from the evidence presented at the wastewater committee meeting, excuse me, Commissioner Wolsey? Uh, excuse me, hold for just a moment. I have not recognized you to speak, Commissioner Wolsey. Commissioner Wolsey?
Not us.
Ms. Wolsey?
Point of order. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink.
Right.
Roll call vote, please.
We're voting to-
Drop Oak Point.
Drop Oak Point.
Okay. I say yes, aye.
Hold on, wait for the, for the-
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
No.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant? Commissioner Ladsen?
I'm going to defer, only if we can give them the opportunity for one month.
That would be amending a motion. You have to either defer until the end of the vote, or you have to then try to amend the motion after that's already-
Okay, no at this time.
Okay.
Commissioner Milliken?
No.
Commissioner Wolsey?
Yes.
It's a tied motion.
That means it fails.
The motion failed.
Motion fails due to a tie.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to revisit this at the June meeting, giving the one month proposed by Commissioner Cantrell for the responding parties on Oak Point Drive to either get it or not get it.
I second that motion.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant? Commissioner Ladsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolsey?
Yes.
Our next meeting will be June 24th. Please make a note that this will appear on there as an action item. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'm really annoyed that we are spending time on just pushing stuff on people. I mean, you know, it just, I'm telling you, I'm, I'm just annoyed.
Well, that's, that's, you can be annoyed, but we're going to give them 30 days as the, as the vote of this commission tonight.
Wait, I'm not finished. There are people who don't have sewer, and we wasting time-
Understand. Point of order, though. Unless you have a question for the commission, Commissioner, please yield.
Well, I'm talking to you.
No, you're making commentary. If you have a question for the commission, that's something else.
I'm talking, I'm making a statement.
Okay. Well, thank you for your statement. Now, we have oral and written petitions, three minutes per speaker. Has anybody signed in? All right. Item number 11 is executive session associated with the following. Discussion of negotiations and/or receipt of legal advice concerning a purchase agreement for Tax Map Sheet Number 425-12-00-298 and Tax Map Sheet Number 425-12-001852. And item B, discussion of the district manager search. I make a motion we enter into executive session.
Madam Chair? I just have a correction. That second tax map number is a typo because that two should have been a little tiny two. So it's actually 4251200185.
Thank you.
Just for the record.
Listen in addition. Thank you. I seconded by Commissioner Cantrell. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant? Commissioner Ladsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolsey?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming. We're going into executive session. We will see you momentarily. Okay. Executive session has ended. We are resuming the regular commission meeting of the James Island Public Service District. No action was taken in executive session. I make a motion to recess. What do you call it? A fancy word. Second. All those in favor, say aye. And thank you for your time and coming tonight.